Special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is August 25th. The time is now 1:01. And let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a special meeting. We do not have public audience. So we're going to jump right into selectman action. There were two items added to the top of the agenda, I believe, because of a timeliness issue. So hopefully we could get through those quickly so we could jump to the heart of the meeting. The first item is the AARP Connecticut Living Communities Grant. Amber and Maria submitted this agenda item. So if you can give us some information on it, that would be great.
Sure. So this was a grant opportunity that just recently came to our attention. But it does have a grant deadline that's quickly approaching and it would be prior to our next meeting. So we were just looking for authorization to submit a grant application to Connecticut AARP. And our hope is that it would provide funding for essentially, we would call it Simsbury Stories Cafe, but then really it's the memory cafe program, which is for individuals experiencing Alzheimer's and dementia as well as their caregivers.
Okay, and this town staff has enough time, didn't have enough time to do this?
This is actually a program they would love to do if we had resources. So we will be able to make this happen. And our deputy for selectmen has offered to assist in the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Move effective August 25th, 2022 to authorize the middle of the AARP Connecticut Livable Communities Grant Application and to authorize Maria Capiola to execute the grant application. And if it's awarded, move to accept the AARP Connecticut Livable Communities Grant, authorize Maria Capiola to execute all documents related to the grant award. Can I get a motion on that?
No.
So moved.
I get it.
Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move along. The next item up is the Healthy Living Grant. This one has come around before, correct?
That's correct. Right. So you may recall, we previously submitted a grant application for funding for a Tai Chi program at the senior center. We did receive that grant. That program was very well received. And we learned of another round of funding for this program that's opening up. But again, the application deadline is prior to your next meeting. So we were just hoping to get authorization today to submit the grant application for the Tai Chi program.
Okay. Any questions by anybody? Move effective August 25th, 2022 to authorize the middle of the Healthy Living Collective Grant, Tai Chi Kwan Moving for Better Balance Program and Instructor Training Grant Application to authorize Maria Capiola Town Manager to execute the grant application. And in the event the grant is awarded, to move to accept the Healthy Living Collective Grant, I'm not going to say it again, to authorize Maria Capiola Town Manager to execute all documents related to the grant award.
Move that.
I'll second.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we get to the Board of Selectmen Goals. So as everybody knows, we've been talking about these for quite a while. We met on August 8th and went to late in the evening to talk about the goals. And what we were hoping to do today is get kind of a final priority on what we want our goals and how we want them reflected. So there's a, I had presented, put together a PowerPoint that I was hoping to discuss. It incorporates all the goals, some that, they were ranked high, medium. And I have those in the packet, but I did want to address the, Sean, if you wanted to weigh in on this sheet of 15, 14 goals that you weighed in on? And if you had anything you wanted to add about these or why, how we got to those?
Yeah, so just to be clear, I think that was the action item was that town staff was going to prioritize as best they could based on our prior rankings, the goals. And then I think one of the takeaways, I raised my hand at some point during the meeting to say I'd be happy to look at goals. So those did come to me. I didn't change them.
Okay.
I didn't reorder anything. My only comment was that in using the ranking system of where the majority of us had prioritized those, that seemed to make sense to me. I cut it down to 15, give or take, which I think is in the ballpark of what we were all looking for, down from 40 plus, 60 plus when we started. And again, it's certainly something directionally that I think we can utilize to finish off this discussion. We can, we can cut it down to 10. We can cut, leave it at 15. We can go to 20. There's a lot of ways we can do this once we reach consensus, but I think it was in the spirit of what we had, we had been talking about last time with trying to find a way to objectively cut these down to a manageable number. And then we can have our say from there.
Okay, so.
Wendy, if I could just.
Yeah, sure.
Speaking on the list. And so what we did, again, what we thought we heard with consensus at the last meeting is to narrow down the list, we took items that three or more Board of Selectmen members ranked as medium or high. And that was sort of what helped us shortlist it to the, I'm sorry, to the 14 or so items. We removed a duplicate item. And then there are just a couple of quick items I do want to just mention. On my list, it's sort of eight. It's around the charrette and rezoning for tariff bill. We may have discussed this previously. If that is a goal that ultimately the board moves forward with, we may just want to footnote that that is something that, that's something we would need to work in collaboration with the planning commission on. And then you had also asked if there were any potential goals that, you know, at a staff level that we thought could be considered more organizational focused, perhaps included in the town manager's goals. So I did just want to share, you know, I think that the three goals that are undering the focus area of fostering and engage high quality workforce, those are items that you could certainly choose to move perhaps to that list, as well as the police services staffing study. Typically, once the board has approved funding, it takes over as a staff project at that point. I have asked a few of our board members to help and Wendy has offered to help as well. So there will be some board involvement moving forward. But again, if that was perhaps something you wanted to move to the organizational goals, that might just help further narrow your list as well.
Okay, so I, I'm going to raise a question here. I put together a PowerPoint with the methodology, which followed Maria's methodology, which Amber, Heather had mentioned last week, that on the 8th, how many had highs, how many had mediums? So she had done some of that analysis already. So I did that. And then I tried to restructure the goal so it wasn't just a flat sheet of a list and to look at it a little bit at a higher picture. And so I have notes and comments and, you know, action items for the board within here if the board would like to continue and go through this, because it has a little bit more than is included in, in this list, because some of them I felt warranted further discussion by the board. There were some that did have more than, that had three or more votes on it that, again, I wanted to keep on here so others could weigh in before we took them off and maybe understand the reasoning if they should go to the town manager's goals or stay on our goals. So I'm going to ask if the board is okay moving forward, going through the PowerPoint, or if people want to just stop at the list that we have here. And then we're done. How do, how do people feel?
I mean, you put the time into a PowerPoint when we take a look at it.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, people are.
I imagine similar to this, but.
Yeah, it basically has all the same goals within here, but it shows it in context with the other goals and some of the items that were not on the list. So basically, we could just go through it and confirm the ones that we want in here. Is the board okay with that?
Just to clarify, you said that, well, first of all, thank you Wendy for the PowerPoint whether we look at it or not, I think it helped me walk through this. Are you saying that there are, so to distill this differently, the 15 that are on, the 15 that are on this list are in your PowerPoint?
Yes.
Plus additional ones that you chose to put back on?
I didn't put them back on. They had weighting that I felt also warranted discussion. There were some that had three high.
Okay, so you put them back on because.
Well, I didn't put them back on. They were on there. I just took this list and made sure it was incorporated in this.
What I'm just saying is that.
Yes, they're in there.
They didn't meet the weighting criteria for this, your weighting criteria.
They met this, I used the same weighting criteria with a little bit more of an extension.
Okay, I'm fine with going through it then.
Basically what I'm saying. So if you want to, do you have the PowerPoint, Melissa?
Anybody have objections to go? No, okay.
I think it's worth, Wendy ran the presentation by me and I think it captures the spirit of what we're trying to do. And I do agree with the high level goals that are put there. I think we're going to debate all the subcategories.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a lot there. And it's a ton of work and I don't want to in any way say that I don't appreciate that. But again, this is, this is, you know, probably five years worth of work in terms of execution. So I think we're going to have to make some decisions, is my opinion.
Well, that's the point. I expect to cut from this, but I wanted to make sure we looked at them as a whole, right?
And again, it does align with the 15, so I don't think any work.
Yeah, there's nothing, no. So that, so I said, I did this to unflatten the way the goals looked before and it requires the board in spots to answer some questions. The methodology was we, I took out anything with lows that were all lows and no's, which is what the town also did. I ranked each by the number of votes in the high and medium column, took those as votes. I also included the second rank, a second column with the ranking of lows. Not that we will use it, but if there's any kind of discussion, it does show that people had it on their radar. And the chopping block was, oh, it's anything with one H and M vote. And then a couple of other things I pulled out, which we could talk about as we go through this, but I pulled the ARPA item out because there's really not a lot of decision making around ARPA, so to speak anymore. It's now basically going to be, other than the projects that we've initiated, it's part of our capital and planning item and it's just revenue law. It's treated as revenue law, so it's just funding within the budget. I didn't think that needed a separate item. The emergency service contract from our goals, I took that out as that's a function of Maria's job. I believe they took that out too. And then I did merge a couple. Amber and I both had affordable housing, so I merged my votes with Amber's. And then the DEI I merged, one that I had separated because of wording and put it in with the other one. And then a couple other points here. So if you want to just flip to the first page, this is up to the board. I thought it would be nice to have a mission statement to start as an opening statement on a cover sheet of our goals to the town. People agree, they can, they can say that they would like it and we could look at this. And if we don't want it, we can just, we can exit. So I'll take, I'm going to take a vote on every item. I mean, it just sets the tone as opposed to if you look at a list of items, it tells us, tells the town what we are striving to do as the elected body here. So you want to take a vote in or out? I'll say, I'll make a motion to see if we would like to have an overarching mission statement to our goals.
So I'm fine having a mission statement. When we get to get these, these goals adopted and get moving on them.
Yeah, we do.
Then we have to then discuss and settle on the mission statement.
Okay.
Which is not necessarily, I'm not saying it's a bad mission statement, but I'm not prepared to, let's just get this freaking thing done. Get it in motion so we could get Maria and her staff moving and not worry about the mission statement.
Okay, let's go. Let's move on then. Okay, so the next item is, these are all the strong financial management, capital planning goals pulled out. The primary initiatives were the main ones that were in, in our, in our goals. It shows how many had high and medium and then how many had high, medium, low. The way I looked at this, which may or may not be true, is that in the first one, it said incorporate the town's facility master plan results. But if we're going to say that there, why wouldn't we incorporate a culture parks and rec master plan results? And so the way I envisioned it was to have that as a top goal and then the priority focus of both of the master plans, which also have some items in here. And we can just go through the list if you'd like. And if you want to have these as separate goal, goals, that's fine too.
Yeah, and this is where the devil in the details, as I was saying before, is, is this could be our entirety list of goals and this is a pretty intense list, right? So.
Okay.
And I, so I like everything that's on here. I love the way it's organized because the goal is strong financial management, right? Capital planning, that's the strategic goal. And then is, and then this is what I told you the other day, I like how you got down to the next level and then even the third or fourth level from there. What I wonder is, is, you know, like, do we need to say T-Ville? Do we need to say conduct capital improvements to Simsbury Farms? You know, if folks show strongly that those have to be there, I'm not going to die on that hill. But again, is investing in culture parks and rec and open space enough to say? Or do we have to be so specific underneath?
Well, I just was going to say, having seen all of the slides, I, I, I do appreciate how much work went into it, but I find it overwhelming in a different way to understand, are we agreeing on every one of these line?
Nope, we're voting on them.
Can I finish?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so we're going to, so we're voting on each item listed under each of these categories? Because this is several pages of, so in the end, how many goals are there?
I don't know, but the bottom, that last page is the ones that were taken out.
But we're not voting on those, right?
No, those are out.
Okay, so how many are in?
There's 12 on this page.
On this page? But I'm saying of all the pages, I feel like are we back up to?
Well, we were never.
30 plus goals?
Well, we're trying to reduce them, is what we're trying to do here, right? So if we go through each page and we decide which ones we want to keep in and out, we'll cross them off the list.
It's 29.
Right? That second page is a version of how, a different presentation version, which is not necessarily in here. It was done to show how we could present our, our goals in a communication to the public. And that was just something I wanted to put together.
It was 29 or 30.
Okay, so let's just go through each sheet and, and keep the ones that we want to keep in here. All right, under the way they're organized this way. So you can look at them in the context of the overarching goal.
Going back to Sean's question, I think that there could be an opportunity to collapse many of these because they're been prioritized in either our Parks and Rec Master Plan, our facilities master plan, open space. And I think it's, it almost goes without saying that we're going to support those plans, but maybe we, maybe that's a single goal.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's great. So, so let's go through and keep or not keep, right? So we engage in long range capital planning. We've all agreed that that is a top goal for all of us. If we say incorporate the town's facility master plan results, we could also say incorporate the Parks and Rec master plan results. And then we don't itemize all the items below, because as we pointed out in one of the other meetings, they're all part of the capital master plan. So the parks and athletic fields, capital improvements to Tariffel Park, capital improvements to Simsbury Farms, you're going to lose those as focus, but.
No, they're in the master plans.
I think they should be a focus to the extent that they've been prioritized in the master plan.
They're in the master plans.
Okay, so then that's.
Yeah, people shouldn't take that if it's not on this document, it's not going to happen. And we should, that's not the burden, right? It's, and we, we could simply put, you know, strong financial management and capital planning and it could mean all of these things.
That's exactly, well, that's why I included those, because they're kind of focus areas. So it kind of shows what's included in there for people to understand where our, our hearts are. And if we don't, if you don't feel we need to spell it out, I don't think there's any harm in having it in a context, but that's fine. We don't need it. We can just add it right up on the top line.
The only directionality is, is I think town staff has appreciated in the past when they know what our highest, medium and lowest goals are as they look to allocate resources. This is the only counterpoint I'll make to what I said before, is if we go too high level, then it's kind of, it's left, it's too broad, right? And Maria, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, but you know, if you know that, you know, capital planning is our highest priority, you're probably going to work with us sooner rather than later to help facilitate a meeting between us and the Board of Education and the Board of Finance, et cetera, to do that, right?
Right.
If it's more ambiguous, you're not a mind reader and you're not going to know that that's our top priority.
Some, right, while you're trying to keep that high level and broad, a little bit of specificity at the same time is, is helpful.
Well, let's go through these then and then we can figure out how to keep them worded in the rest of the context. So we all agree in the top item. And we plan to include the master plan and open space parks and rec master plans in there. How we word that could be like a subwording under that goal. The other item that's up here, everybody had was explore shared services between town of Simsbury and the Board of Ed. And then this one had three, two highs and a medium, I believe. Improve the budget process, reduce redundancies, identify savings, GFOA practices and clarity to the public. That, that was not on Maria's list, but it was, I had three high and mediums. So we could discuss why that's not. And then apply for and explore grant funding for townwide assets. So two of those are on the condensed list and there's two additional ones on here.
The, the third bullet, which is the one that's been added back, improve the budget process, reduce redundancies, identify, that is one where, well, it's a, both of the, the two, actually second and third. Fourth, so second, third and fourth to me, now that we're having this conversation. Second is something that has already been done. We've already done that, correct?
For finance.
So to go back to my original comment from the last meeting, that would be something that is, I don't know that it's a new, that's what I'm struggling with. I don't think it's a new goal. It's one that should be existing and ongoing.
Yeah, and I think there are some activities for other areas besides finance.
Correct, it's just, yes.
I think they're working on fleet and other things.
So I think that, I think that's an assumptive kind of a path that you guys are already working on. You're already walking down, whether it's BOE, I mean, just IT, everything. So I just, that's my comment there. Improve the budget process, which is the third bullet point, which is why it's off to me. That to me is again, is something, it's assumptive. I thought, aren't we already doing that? And then apply for grant funding, why it shouldn't, why I don't think it should, it fell off, why it's not one of the top two is, again, that's already being done as a regular practice of government.
Yeah, so I think what I struggled with, with those bottom two, you know, the improve the budget process and the apply for and explore grant funding is those are, to me, sort of basic assumptive, keep the lights on activities that I would have expected would be happening if you're not following GFOA best practices. That's a problem.
Right.
So I didn't know if we needed to call that out. I'm not against any of these things.
No, 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 that's what I'm struggling with. So this is, whoever, whosever's points these are, which is like something, it's like us versus these, it's not about that. It's like Tom Roy is already going after that money for the sidewalks through a grant process. Fair statement? Okay, so that's, again, it's a, it's a, it's a regular expected practice of our government as it exists today. Highlighting it would be almost like saying we're, it's either not being done effectively or not being done at all.
I thought first time being through the budget process, that although GFOA best practices, I do think that the process, the budget process that we went through could be improved. And I do think there are redundancies. And I do, did think that having that enormous binder, not a single section on savings and growth opportunities was shocking to me, first time through it, just saying.
Well, that's where, that was, I kind of thought, we usually go into the budget. We keep, we maintain services from year to year. I don't know if we, maybe we do, Maria, look for ways to reduce costs, but keep services at the same level, to do things smarter, differently. That, that's all I meant by that was, are there ways that we could?
We've been doing that for 12 years. That's not a novel concept with this board. I mean, we had a spend to save program that we've invested millions in savings. I think we've saved several million dollars on a radio. I mean, and again, the budget process is not ours. The town manager initiates the budget process. We get a vote and forward it on to the Board of Finance. So we can change our portion of the budget process and we could ask for different things. But Maria is not directed by us in terms of preparation of the budget. That isn't her role to create as the town manager. We then have a say on what we pass. So we require different information, that's fine. And then the Board of Finance asks for a thousand things beyond what we even ask for. So and that's part of the problem, which I'll, I'll get to my point, is charter revision resolves this problem, not a Board of Selectmen strategic goal.
Does a charter revision say that we should look for savings in the budget?
No, but again.
Sure, Maria has a point.
Yeah, so just a couple of quick points. I think we have brought this up previously. So the Board of Finance does ask us to prepare on an annual basis, a list of various savings and efficiency initiatives. We typically bring that to them in the August, September timeframe, so that will be coming up to them at their September meeting. We typically do also forward that on to the Board of Selectmen, just for informational purposes, because it does have a significant amount of, I think, helpful information. To Sean's point, I agree. I think from staff's perspective, the redundancies, et cetera, are oftentimes our charter requirements. You know, I do think there is a lot of opportunity for improvement in terms of streamlining our budget process, doing things differently. I think I've shared this in the past as well, that our bond council has shared with us. She has been doing this work in Connecticut since the mid 1980s for many communities and she's never seen the level of duplication that we have in our charter that we have anywhere else. So I think that again, is definitely a charter opportunity. In terms of, again, kind of going back to the core, you know, functions of government that are again, more organizational, I think that, you know, Chris and Eric brought a good point up and that, you know, as we're working through the budget process, and thank you, Sean, also for right, the charter responsibilities, that, you know, Melissa and myself, part of our, our core training with our MK background is budgeting. And, you know, I've been to training for, it's through GFOA for their budget document presentation. We were management analysts, so right, that's part of those, those core sort of responsibilities and training that we're bringing into the materials that we're presenting to you. But again, I think that piece is more organizational as opposed to something that's charter oriented, which would be more policy oriented.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is the board would like to remove the bottom two. I guess the one question I have though is, is the grants. I, the way I looked at it is sometimes we don't have resources to complete the grant applications, which means we may not be doing them to try to get free money. Is that ever a case here? Or do we always have the resources to apply for eligible grants that could benefit the community?
Yeah, there's been, since I've been here, one instance where we did not have capacity because of other grant opportunities that were already programmed, where we just didn't have time to complete it. But that's maybe one instance in, say, almost five years.
And that was probably why I kept it on here. So basically, you're saying we have capacity for, for funding opportunities that come to the board that we can benefit for and we won't like not do a grant that would benefit the town based on resources? And that would be, that would be on your team?
Yeah, generally, again, I think that, you know, again, especially if we think that it's a good opportunity and it fits, you know, the strategic priorities, et cetera, well, or a day-to-day service delivery, you know, we'll do our best to reprioritize and make that grant application a priority.
And the other thing to just give us comfort is when there are specialized grants that require specialized input, we hire consultants to do that.
That is correct. We do that from time to time.
Okay, and so item three, the improve the budget process, I'm hearing a consensus that, I mean, I'd like to keep it in, but am I hearing that most of the board doesn't want to keep it in?
That'd be my preference to, to not.
Amber?
Yes, I agree.
I, I agree that it's assumptive, I don't need to add it and it's a specific.
I'm just, I'm just making sure.
I'm going to disagree, but that's okay.
Okay, I disagree too. Okay, that's fine. So we're going to have the top two here. Let's go through the Parks and Rec focus items, because those are also separate goals and how we show them, we can incorporate them under the capital planning or elsewhere. The prioritize trails, the trails in the Tariffel, in Tariffel, everyone voted as a high for that. And I think that was on Maria's list. Invest in athletic fields and facilities, again, in the ref, in context, not just in general, but in the context of the master plan, right? And then.
To cut to it, I would, I would be comfortable leaving the first one in there because we voted specifically to prioritize funding to accelerate that study, right?
Yep.
I think it's important we leave that. Again, I'm just one person, but I would be comfortable lumping the other three and to continue to invest and execute our culture parks and recreation open space plan.
Sean, that's where my head was too.
So I would add those, can't we add those to the top goal of the long range planning? Or do you think it should be a separate focus?
I think just continued investment in culture parks and rec and, and open space master planning suffices, because those items are in there, right? Investing in athletic fields, investing capital improvement. We have just made a capital improvements to Tariffel Park, right?
Yep.
Can, conduct improvements to Simsbury Farms, those are all part of it. And again, it, staff should, I would hope not be confused that as certainly a priority. And that as those priorities change, we want to have a conversation with Tom and his team and Maria and yours, right, on, on when it comes time for capital investments? Are we prioritizing, you know, the, the study itself?
Is there any reason though, in the same, the master, the infrastructure, that we can't show those as just areas of focus? They're not a separate goal, but they, we don't lose that we have those as areas of focus on the spreadsheet or the document that we end up compiling?
To me, it's potato and potato in terms of whether we're high level or we want to get into the weeds. I mean, from a goal standpoint, it's not a goal, but.
It's a, it's a priority and a direction, so.
And I think our obligation is to fund those priorities and direction, because we're And I think our obligation is to fund those priorities and direction, because we're investing in our Culture Parks Plan. That's, again, just philosophically how I come at this.
I'm looking at it like if the, if the public came to me and said, you're engaging in long-range capital planning relating to the Parks and Rec Master Plan and the Facilities Enrollment Plan, then they've got to go dig up the, which I have to do too, dig up the master plan, and they don't know that, you know, these kind of rise to the top, so that when Maria and her team does the budget, these would rise to the top when they're deciding what to push forward to us for capital. Otherwise, they won't be anywhere.
So Wendy, that's a, that's a great point. I appreciate you saying that. It's one that we're missing, I think. So, so to, to take the one that I was, is, as an example, take one that it's very important to me, which, this just illuminated, it's, it's, it's okay that there's disagreement. The investment in athletic fields and facilities. So using that as an example of what you just mentioned, if we, if we, if we apply that, and I'm in agreement of looking at these through our master plans, correct? Looking, in, in the concept of master plans. But we never have discussed, we don't organize ourselves with our master plans. We don't have sub, we don't, once a quarter, pick a master plan to walk through and say, well, what from this master plan? Because a plan is just someone's advice of what you should do. So then who is executing the master plan as it relates to a prioritization of what's important? So I appreciate your comment. Here's an opportunity for us to take the, as, as a personal idea, the, for me personally, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and make sure that if nothing else gets done in it, that we invest in our field. We've said that is, that, I've said that's a priority for me. That's what I'm asking the board to help me with. I'm not saying, so that, that's part of why it's on here for me, is help me, how do we make use, how do we, how do we activate these plans? Rather than just have them for reference point. That's question number one. Question number two is.
Thanks, Adam, before you go on the sermon.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So instead of us nickel and diming about the gas budget on the fourth line of the 57th tab, we should be having that conversation during the budget process, Chris. So Mr. Tbersky, you sent us 27 capital items. Did you follow the master plan? And please, you know, can you walk us through those? That's where that discussion should be, on the execution of the initiative. And if we're uncomfortable with what's in there, then we need to orientate ourselves, or we need to ask for a presentation from staff on what it is before we get into the budgetary side of it.
I mean, for those sections that have master plans, we get the memo, right, that goes before the budget ask. The memo should be incorporating the master plan and addressing how it relates back, right, wouldn't it?
I, I agree, but I, I, I'm asking this group to then familiarize ourselves with these plans to, 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 at a, at a, to a deeper point, as it relates to things that we've said are important to us. You don't necessarily need to go in there and say, ah, you're gonna get in trouble here. I'll give the example, that the Schultz Park gazebo is not something that needs to be fixed, or you need to know intimately about that. But I'm saying, if, if, if we, so that's what I'm asking for, is that once we look, well, once we identify something that may fall in the plan, then we should act upon it to, or familiar ourselves and, and get deeper into that. So, Sean, I'll, 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 I'll back down from what you just, not, not back down, but move away from with, with what you just said as, as a guiding principle. The other reason why this is on here for me, and this is the last one you're hearing me talking about, is because I think it falls in a unique, and again, it's not necessarily about it, but it falls into a unique place where it straddles two areas. Therefore, it could get lost, because no one takes it up, and that's the BOE. Because the fields are shared, the, if you're, shared, much of our fields are shared use to the BOE. So how do we execute the Parks and Rec Master Plan? Execute the BOE Master Plan, the infrastructure plan, because this is one, this is an area that triangulates across all. So who really is actually gonna do something versus, I thought Jerry was gonna do it, I thought Amy was gonna do it, I thought Timmy was gonna do it.
Another thing, too, as well, with the athletic fields, I mean, we talk so much right now about mental health, and, you know, athletics plays such an important role in mental health and, you know, that area as well.
So that, that's really what, I, I, so that's kind of what, those two was two, one was, the, both of these are tactical. That, one was, how do we actually execute this with, if we go down the path which, which Sean is recommending and Wendy's recommending, which I appreciate and agree with. Two, this, this situation, which is unique, because, again, it triangulates across three entities. Who drives it? Who's response, whose money is it? And the third thing I'll add, just that, not the third thing I'll add, but with my friend Heather said, this is completely selfish, because my kids are of playing age, so I see it. We have abysmal facilities compared to towns that we always hold ourselves. I mean, it is embarrassing when you go to Granby. Okay, you go to Canton, you go to Farmington, you go to West Hartford, you go to Glass, don't anybody visit Glass and Berry, God forbid, okay? Or even Farmington. We, it is embarrassing considering where we hold ourselves educationally and, and spend, and what our kids, our youth play on. That's it.
Yeah, so let's, let's, so, so what I, this is what I'm hearing. Engage in long-range capital planning and incorporating the master plans. I still think there's room to not have these as a goal, but to show the focus on the prioritization of the Terriffill Gap, the investment in the athletic fields and facilities, improvements to Terriffill and Simsbury Farms. Those all had, except for Simsbury Farms only had three, but those all had over, you know, four votes by members of the board as high or medium. So to me, you could continue to show those as priorities under the capital plans, so we don't lose those when the time comes and have to dig this back out.
So are those high, because here, do they tie in the high, medium numbers here for these top 14 as the same exact there?
Should be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'll, I'll, I will comfortably move, comfortably, and, and, and actively support the, the removal of that, if you will, but with the sub-context of moving, as you said, Wendy, putting into the plan. But I would like some follow-up thought put into Maria. Again, the issue of, how do we potentially execute them when there's a triangulation issue?
So can I, can I just move this conversation?
Not for today.
Take all three and change the goal to execute the investment in athletic fields, facilities, Terriffill Park and Simsbury Farms. It's the same thing. Coordinate and execute, right, is what we're saying. Invest is, I mean, we're not investors. We want to execute in our, our fields and facilities.
This, so we're prioritizing these three things within the context of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. That's all, that's all it's saying, right?
Is that a goal or is that an initiative?
It's a, it's a, it's a sub-goal. It's an initiative under the goal of long-range capital planning.
If we take these goals that Sean and Maria put together, and then, I know Maria listed that three are more organizational, but then there's, most of it overlaps here, so which ones don't?
The capital improvements to Simsbury Farms.
I mean, out of all the 29. You know, there are a number that don't, but which?
Well, the capital improvements to Simsbury Farms is not on the list, and none of the infrastructure items are there. So we would take those off.
But ideally, we need to get down to a certain number, correct? And that number is what?
We need to get down to a reasonable sample set of execution. I don't think there's, Maria's got advice on numbers, but it's.
So, sorry, as, as I've been just listening to the conversation, I've been working on some wording, because what I think I'm hearing from folks is that, right, there's a recognition that we want to continue to implement our Parks and Open Space Master Plan, but within that Parks and Open Space Master Plan, that Athletic Fields, Terriffill Park and Simsbury Farms are, are rising perhaps to a higher level. So perhaps it's a revised worded, revised wording saying something to the effect of invest in our athletic fields, Terriffill Park, Simsbury Farms, and implement the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. They're related, right, but we're kind of saying that those three items are of most importance to this board, and I don't know if that.
And the trails.
That's the same.
I think what I'm hearing is maybe keeping the trail connectivity separate.
Okay, yeah, so then you'd have two.
All I'm saying is wrapping those three together.
There you go.
Yeah, and then we'd have two goals.
Maria's version is prettier, but the point is, is wrapping them together, those are our three priorities for that space.
I think we do need to tape Sean off while I'm listening.
Okay, so then, going over to the infrastructure facilities master plan, none of these are on this list. But, but they did come up with three high, medium votes, so I just brought those back out here to make sure. We do not want to include those anywhere as a, as a goal or priority. I like the, the engage in clean energy initiatives. I know that Tom Roy has talked about at some point hiring, I forgot the term. Right, and then there's the IIJA coming up, and there's gonna be opportunities with CROG to get money for these kinds of things that are gonna come around in the next couple of years. So I put it back out here for board discussion if they wanted to keep something like that out here or not.
Yeah, I'm okay with all three of those as is. The bottom one, I think, is something with the crosswalks, I would assume that that would.
For facilities master plan.
Yeah, right.
But I don't think there's harm in calling that.
And, and, and the, the, specifically, calling out Town Hall Crosswalk, we've talked about that.
We did.
That's, I'm sorry?
It's terrible.
Oh, no, 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 but, yeah, in the light of, we've talked about, and I think Tom has had conversations.
Multiple times.
And the fact that it's a state road always makes it very problematic about, but it's. Maria, correct? I mean, that is one that is specifically, that's a conversation that is already occurring, or has occurred.
Right, so that, exactly, that's a state road, so there are some challenges and difficulties with design. But we are working on the Town Hall parking lot renovations, as well as the entrance and exit configuration, which does include some work for the crosswalks. That's the.
So respecting whichever board member highlighted the crosswalk in front of Town Hall, I mean, I imagine somebody put it on there. I didn't do it, but respecting whoever put that on there, then maybe there is a follow-up, there due, kind of an update of that specifically what's happening, or a refresh of what's happening, it is being looked at.
It's the same round, round conversation we just had about Mark, Parks and Rec, is that it's part of the facilities.
Yeah, isn't it, are we just highlighting that this is a priority in the facilities master plan?
Again, continue the priorities, implementation of the facilities master plan, inclusive of clean energy initiatives, et cetera, et cetera, and improved crosswalks and intersections. Boom, one goal.
Yeah.
Well, then get the Town Hall one out of there, because then, to me, it's already being done.
Yeah, that's done.
Whoever, whoever put it in there, ask, get that person an update.
All three becomes one.
Yeah, like you just did.
So there's really four goals coming out of, five goals coming out of this page, right? The first one, engage, explore the shared services, the trail, merging of the priorities for the Parks and Rec Master Plan, merging of the priorities for the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Under the goal of strong financial management and capital planning, unless. Okay, done, all right.
Don't give us an inch.
Okay. All right, I'll skip my next page, which is just a way to present this to the public, so it was more readable.
Can we just go back? Because I just want to make sure that I'm capturing sort of the general consensus there. So collapsing the various infrastructure goals.
Underneath.
To reflect.
Well, there's only one, actually, yeah.
To reflect one.
Yep.
Continue prioritization and implementation of facilities master plan items, comma, including sustainability initiatives. And then, did you also want anything in there around traffic calming, or was it just highlighting sustainability work?
I love my traffic calming measures, but.
Where's traffic coming?
It's not on here.
I'm sorry, I'm confusing that with the Town Hall Crosswalk, I apologize. Okay, so just maybe highlighting the sustainability initiatives within the context of the overall facilities master plan?
Yep, and then the other items under the Parks and Rec.
Engaging clean energy, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I did raise the PAC here, but, because that's becoming a new item, and I'm not sure which master plan that falls into, but there's been discussions on that, that it's not in a master plan, yet we own it, and it's a, becoming a priority of the town, because now we're partnering with them on the new build of the Band Shell.
We haven't agreed to that yet, nor is there any money in the budget for it, unless we cut things.
Well, there's no budget this year. We're, I'm talking, they're, next year, we're looking ahead to next year. They're pushing off the project because of funding issues, because now the town, it's come to light that they have to adhere to the prevailing wage of the state, which raises their costs. The town actually is getting involved, the engineering department's getting involved. We may actually vote, we may bring something to the board to not have them have to go to public building. That's board purview, if I remember from the meeting, Melissa was there, right?
To manage the project, right, but we haven't agreed to any more funds that are already.
No, 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 I'm not saying we've agreed to funds, but.
So I just want to be careful when we use the word partner with them.
Well, what I'm saying is, as we do our next year's budget, it may be an item that we, we, we have to look at.
Well, there's always gonna be emerging situations, right, that are gonna come up. I mean, we won't be able to encapsulate everything that's gonna come up over the next year and a half. It seems like this situation might be a little premature to have a, a specific goal about right now.
It's, I was just, that I've been in a couple of meetings, and it sounds like we are actively participating. I don't know if that's.
Um, we are, but I think we've also been doing that on a pretty regular basis on that project for the last four, four and a half years.
I mean, we're participating in an engineering and a planning level.
I'm reading too.
Not at a, not at a, we're gonna invest in a building with the model. Because the only people that have the authority to do that are sitting at this table.
Yeah, we're definitely not now.
They can do all the drawings they want. They've already, they've already screwed up their chance when they turned down 5.7 million at the library a couple of years ago, when we tried to build them their building and the senior center, and they told us to go pound sand. So this is gonna be a long, hard conversation if they want more money from us.
Okay. If, so that that's the consensus here, I feel differently, and when the budget comes around, if it comes to us, I may feel differently then, depending on, you know, what this does for the economic value of the town and.
Well, some of us haven't gotten any information really on this presented to us yet, so I don't know how I would be able to weigh in on creating a goal for it.
When I have it. To the agenda next time, then.
I don't think, probably for the next meeting, engineering needs, at least through the end of September, to really work through the cost estimates.
Is there an ask for us to fund anything?
Not right now.
No, we don't know what it would be.
No, we don't know. They're trying to raise money.
I mean, at this point, our, in the budget, my recollection is that we put the $350,000 for the, the bathrooms, which will either be used as town-owned bathrooms or incorporated into the PAC facility if it gets built.
Right, and we were told at the naming rights committee that they had a scheme that was gonna cost less than a million dollars to do the thing, and that's the last communication that I've had formally.
Okay, so let's table that. Let's just table it, and we'll see when it comes back up. Okay. As I said before, this page is just a way that we could present the goals data to the public, so that it's more readable than just a list of items in a spreadsheet, but.
We can talk about that once we finish the goal.
Yeah, that's, I'm happy to work on that. Okay, the next item is the goal. So some of these, I took liberties in the wording. I combined public safety, what else was there? Public safety. Public health and wellbeing into one goal, that basically, health, wellbeing and safety of our constituents as one goal. I don't know about the wording on that, I just tried to lump them all together, so there's not millions of categories, and overall, that is what the board, in my opinion, is here for.
I did want to encourage the board to think about adding back a goal, and I'm flexible in how we want to word it, but something around, if not specific to the pollinator pathways, something around sustainability in our in our practices and how we manage our land. Because this is work that, you know, Tom Tbersky's team is gonna be doing regardless around their mowing practices, what they put on our fields, watering practices, and these are things that our board and conservation and open space will be engaging in, and I think given the, the immense challenges that our world is facing, it would be an important message to our community that this is on our radar.
And it's gonna be in direct conflict with quality athletic fields. Right, because sustainability means your grass looks like crap.
Well.
It's the reality of it.
And I'm, and right now, it's too specific to say whether we, how we would want to care for our athletic fields versus our open space, and I want to engage in that right now. But we have a lot of town, as we know, about a third of our town is public land, and I think some statement that it's important that we care for that in a sustainable way would be, would be important.
Through, through some sort of vision or otherwise. I mean, we've already, we've already passed the pollinator proclamation, right, so we've already committed to that there.
And, and 2100, $21,000 over the next three years.
Right, so I mean, it's committed to it, I'm not, to Chris's, to Chris's sermon earlier, I mean, we're not deprioritizing that spend, it's still happening. And if our goal is to continue to look for ways to, as you're saying, do we go back to the, again, I hate to do this, can we go back to the prior slide?
I think.
Other one, not this one, I hate that slide. The.
I think it's important to go through, we already prioritized our high, medium, low. We did points, and now to lobby for something, I think we just need to stick with, we did our high, medium, low, how do we allocate them, and let's get the goals out there.
To me, this isn't lobbying for a pet project. If we're not here to sustainably care for our earth, I don't know what any of us are doing here. And that's why I think it should be, it should be called out as a priority.
Is it in the Open Space Master Plan or Culture Parks and Rec Master Plan?
It is. It's in, it's in the Open Space Master Plan, and it is, so then it becomes bumped up, but it is also something being executed, already being executed, it's already in motion. I drive by it every single day to my office by Endicott's Fields. I love it, right? It's, you see it on Iron Horse. So it's one of the things I struggle with, but then somebody could tell me, we also invest, I don't think we actually are investing in our athletic fields, so this should be off, but it, it is something that's new and in motion, and I think for Heather and for Amber, I'm using you guys, let me talk, let me speak for you guys. Is that, you know, the, these, it's sometimes it's framing, the goal should be something new, like not done at all. That's a, a way I also look at it, and say that we are already doing the pollinator, but the the police study, which is, which is on here, that's something that has never been done. It's new. Let's actually, somebody wants. It's new. Let's actually, somebody wants it on there, let's execute it. So that's one of the ways I think about.
See, I think of it as similar to like DEI initiatives. We're saying that it's still a focus for us. And there's multiple things that you can do to execute on that. And to me, the sustainability piece seems similar in that, you know, we, there are more things to be done. There's like a biodiversity study to be done. There's work on invasive plants and vegetative practices and things like that. So it seems like this is still something that we would want our staff and for Parks and Rec to actively be working towards more sustainable practices in this area. So why not reinforce that this is still a priority for us? That we're not saying, well, we did this, we funded one thing and now we're done.
On the Parks and Rec master, yeah.
But we can use that logic for a lot of different things, like, so are you saying to leave it where it is or you're saying to call it out? Because there's other issues we said we don't need to call out because they're being done inherently. So how do we?
My preference would be to call this out in similar vein to the DEI initiatives, but I will, I will, I've made my case and I will.
Okay, so let's go through the health, safety and wellbeing.
Or put it into.
Statement.
Acknowledge that it's in the master, Parks and Rec master plan and then, and then have a conversation.
Like call it out as a priority within the master plan.
Not, not starting to stop the conversation.
We didn't, like, if you look.
Already in Maria's is a low and her goals after this.
Oh, we did. I was, I wasn't thinking of that from that perspective. Correction, strike it.
So let's go back to the number, which is what this was based on, right? So this health, safety and wellbeing, the conduct this, the SPD study, but we all, we all voted for that. Now, it's a goal of ours because we funded it. It is now becoming administrative, but it does have board input on it. So it's still a goal to see where it comes because it's going to come back around to us at the budget after budget after budget. So I think it warrants staying here.
We funded it once, right? So why, why are we not done with this?
Because we may have to fund differently next year or the year after.
My only reason for keeping it here is because there will be changes and I think there needs to be accountability. That we don't just fund a study that just dies somewhere downstairs or upstairs. That's, that's my only rationale, Amber, is I've seen too many times where we invest in a study and it sits on a shelf. Yeah.
Yep. I mean, five people gave it, voted to keep it on here, so I'm fine keeping it on here. Then the receive the annual updates from the Simsory Volunteer Ambulance.
That's a task item for the published safety subcommittee, so while I think it's all important, I don't.
I don't think it should be on here either. Yeah, I agree.
Again, you guys can hold me accountable to report on that from the PS standpoint. That's really where that belongs.
Yeah, because Maria, you go to the meetings, right? That's happening, so I don't think it needs to be a goal.
Yeah, we're not saying we're not going to get the updates. It's just that doesn't need to be a strategic goal for the board selection.
Okay, and then the DEI, I put the wording back to where it was after we met the first time because it, we had the council in here, we had agreed to take the council out. And you can put it back in if you want to, but I think we want to support townwide DEI initiatives and develop a DEI vision for the community and the organization. And we had four high, medium votes there, and that would be a result of the study that DEI is working on, because we don't know what that data is even going to do and what the vision would look like. So if you like the wording, how it is now, it's a little bit more generic.
I'm okay with it as is.
Okay, and if you read CD Capital Report, the new cannon just pulled out DEI from their board of selectmen or town council goals and the community revolted. Just happened to read that later today.
Doesn't seem like a smart thing to do.
But it was in there. Okay, I, some of these I took liberties to include back in. I wanted to have everybody just weigh in on them. Some of them were from Amber, which I thought important because they're things that we hear from the community. So they're back here, but we can take them out. They're not in the town list. Provide the mental health, you know, we funded that as a pilot right now. There were three high, medium votes on this. I'm not really sure what to do with that, but I'm putting it out here. If we want to keep that as a goal here, because we are funding it, we will be looking at the value of that over the next few years. But it really is more, going to be more administrative now, so my thoughts from anybody, keep, lose.
I, my, I think that those two, to provide mental health and supporting our seniors are, you know, so important that I think it's, it is okay to call them out. My question around the last one, around affordable housing needs, is I know that's one of the work streams of the DEI council.
Okay.
So I, I think that would be, to me, that would be incorporated under supporting DEI.
Right, okay, and I.
I'm just concerned that we prioritized our goals and then it's like we're reprioritizing them again. Like there's one under, and I am, or I, I put to support, but, but it's I'm confused kind of what we're doing.
Yeah, no, we don't, I, I, like I said, I put it back out here.
Originally had to then putting things back on.
Well, we haven't voted on anything yet, so. To discuss these things that have come up before.
Well, like I said, this one only had a one, but it had four other people who voted.
Well, I mean, I, we don't have to make it a goal, but it's something that we're doing. I mean, it's something that we're actively engaging in and, and so I guess that work can continue. It just seemed to me like it would make sense to acknowledge that it was a goal since we're doing the work.
So let's, so it sounds like we just stick to the top four. If we, let's, if we take the provide mental health services and resources to the community, but include, you know.
But if, if that's what we want to discuss right now, but I just, I guess I'm just confused at, I thought we were, we've prioritized our goals twice now and it just seems like we're doing it.
I was putting.
Added to this list, right? I mean, so to pick apart now, something that has been re-added seems kind of, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I, I put this here.
Goals have come and gone for the last seven months.
So beyond what we're doing, are we going to invest in, in our seniors beyond our, our budget, budgeted investments in the next 18 months?
Well, we don't know the results of the survey. That's the reason I put this on here, that before we started now, there's the, the survey that Aging and Disability is working on to get feedback on how to make, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber, this an age friendly community.
Right.
And, and if there's, there's funding needs that need to come up at us during our next budget or any ways that we can help that, that's to me what that survey might bring to light. That's how I'm looking at it, which is why I put it back on the list. If we want to combine, provide mental health services, you know, you know, incorporate that all into one goal, because those are all things that are active pilots or research. We can do that. Provide mental health services.
That's not true though. Provide mental health services and resource is not a pilot.
It, it is a pilot. It's a two-year pilot of what, oh, if what we funded, if, if you don't.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we, how, since I, since I came on the board, I promote, you know, I'm the one who, you know, we added a social worker. So then we have added another, so we're, we're, to say that we're not, it's.
Every family in our community has access to.
Schools.
Some free services, some free mental health services that many are unaware of.
So then do we just take the top three off, leave the top three and take the rest off?
That's what the ranking said, yes.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the ranking said. And again, if folks want to put a motion on the table or an amended goal, which I think is what we're talking about, we can, right?
Okay.
And it's not that we don't care about this stuff, but it's what are we going to put the horsepower of town staff behind for the next 18 months?
Okay, so I'm going to put a motion on the table.
Could just read that. So what I, I think I'm hearing from the group is that the two items under support, the health, safety and wellbeing, I, I might recommend phrasing it to something, community stakeholders, right? Because we have our.
I didn't know what word to use there.
That was just a thought. We could always wordsmith that, but that the two I'm hearing are support townwide DEI initiatives, period. Develop a DEI vision for the community and the organization, so that would be one. And the second was conduct the police services staffing study and implement changes. But that, I thought I had heard that the SVA updates, because we take care of that public safety. Those, those two items, is that correct?
The two. Is that what we're saying? All right.
All right, I would still support acknowledging our seniors and that we're working towards this age friendly designation because I think it is an important goal that we are working on. And I'll just say that, and then if, as a group, we decide to take that off, that's fine, but that's my position on it.
I have no issue with that because it's a low impact goal and I think we can, we can bottom load the list as we have in the past with low impact goals.
And, and I agree, the other thing that Amber's saying is this wasn't, we, we didn't know this was happening when we started this goal process. So when we started really ranking and looking at this, it wasn't an item that we were bringing up. And now it's, we're working on it. We weren't working on it before. If the town's working on it.
I'm, I'm fine with it. It's going to be budgetary, it'll be vetted.
So we're going to go with conduct the SPD work study, the support DEI initiatives and the support the seniors, you know, and see the outcome of that study.
By analyzing and appropriately implementing feedback from the study, whatever, whatever those words say, I trust you.
Right, boom, okay, three. All right, done. And the wording, Maria.
Yes, this is just a draft, but support our seniors through efforts towards becoming an age friendly community.
Based on feedback from our recent community survey.
Well, just, I think even, we don't even need to say that because.
Sure.
Right? But I was meant the goal itself, Maria, you mentioned health, safety, wellbeing of our community. Okay, bonus, done. Okay.
Eric, how are we doing as a client? Would you have fired us yet?
Nope, it's difficult. Different. You know, every organization's got their own challenges.
Transparency in government.
Okay, so this one, I took some liberties as the first selectman here. I did some research. There are multiple town municipal goals that say transparency in government is their top, one of their top goals. I also know that we're talking about retaining our high quality workforce. And at one point, we talked about constituent outreach, so I threw it back on here. I took liberties. We can just take it off. But there were goals, so the only goals under transparency got two ratings, two H and M's. And I wanted to make sure if no one wanted to keep those on the list, then we can do that in, in the public. And then we had the, the workforce ones and then this one. So I'll speak to these. I, I feel that there is a need for more transparency, more information across the board and throughout the town. And I feel that, Maria and I have actually talked about this a little bit, that all these projects that we fund, that we talk about, even though they're being administratively handled, I feel that it would be good to get updates on a regular basis to the board so that we know where they stand and that others can hear where they stand. The same with the staffing needs, like I believe we're potentially hiring an assessor or at the finance committee meeting, I think. Did we, they talked about that?
Recently hired a property appraiser?
Okay, I think, but that was part of the assessor, the whole conversation we had. So I heard that on the finance meeting, that would be good for everybody. I don't know if everybody else heard that or watched the meeting.
Information. We are not their boss. Why is that relevant to the board?
Who's boss?
We're not these people's boss.
Who's boss?
These people that we're hiring. These are sub-department head level employees. I don't need to know every time there's a plow driver, driver hired.
Oh, a high level staffing need is good to know about.
Maria does in her news and announcements when new, new staff comes on all the time.
Okay, it may shed light on where we may not, like when Amy, we brought up, the first time we brought up ClearGov, I did not know that Amy was down a deputy finance director who was out on maternity leave, or we were down an accountant. Did I need to know that? No, but it helps me understand the workload that Amy might have and why certain things can't get added to her plate.
But what are we going to do differently as a board until we bring up a goal that impacts those people? I guess it's, it's a. Talking about a finance initiative and Maria and Amy should be making us aware of staffing challenges in that department. But we're not talking about any finance related. It's not a relevant piece of information.
Okay, so I'm going to just say this. I would vote to include some initiatives around transparency in government. But given that there's only two high and medium votes, does the rest of the board want to keep those or get rid of them?
I want to clarify for the record, there is transparency. We're sitting here on TV and public having, having a very in-depth conversation. So I, I really, it drives me crazy that folks in, in the stratosphere come in and say there's no transparency in government. That's garbage. Everything we write in email is, is F. liable and we've all been FOIA'd rightfully so. Everything we say is recorded on ICTV and in minutes that are codified through a vote and are kept into perpetuity. So there is a substantial amount of transparency in government. And I've said this for 12 years. We need to figure out how to convey information in a way that people, A, care and B, can consume. Transparency is not the issue. It's, no one, it goes to school to read a budget except for the six people in town staff that prepare the damn thing. And folks shouldn't have an expectation that they become budget experts because of an email. And I, I think we need to, how do we convey information that's relevant to folks? And, and again, I resent the fact that, you know, there's a lack of transparency gets thrown around.
So I'm with Sean. In the sense that there, there's, there's like three, there's, to me, there's three, three verticals of transparency that, that we, that we can, I'm asking for consideration around. One is, do we think that, some people throw transparency. I, I would support if there is a belief in this board that information wasn't readily available by townspeople. Like we didn't have, if we don't, if we don't have a good website for it, if we don't have a, a good calendar, if we don't have a good portals, that's one, that's the most, that's the transparency that I think about. Because I think Sean, Sean as well, I think he's really onto something which I've thought of, which is that the word transparency above us, thank gosh, we're, you know, we're, we're functioning and we're respectful and we get things done. But the word transparency is often attached in the media to government as if something is being done under the dark of night. And it's not, and it's, it's nefarious and/or we didn't know about it. And that's what I, so, so I think that some, some of us may be responding to a comment about there's lack of transparency because someone from the outside doesn't like the result of something. And that is not where we should be going down, because I don't think we have that problem, number one. And number two, just to highlight a different point, we are not here to be, I am not here to be a micromanager of town staff. Okay, we have, we have elevated this form of government to a professional level where we have a chief executive, we have a, and I, I struggle with the better term, I, I'm just co-opting someone else's. But we have a, so it is, I don't think that, so there's a, I think, again, there's a response by some people outside of this board who don't like or the way that people either do their job, behave their job or whichever. So therefore, we need to be in, in someone's shorts more. Whatever it is. So that's where I really, why I have a problem with that term transparency. Because I think it's, it has a negative connotation. I am all, in also, in full support, Wendy, if you don't think it's easy for someone to find the budget and understand it. I don't probably. So that's, I'll just stop, I'll stop there.
My issue with transparency, communication and accountability isn't necessarily out to the public. It's more internally, where I think there are issues.
What are you not? Charter or slack this under process.
Are you mixing performance and transparency?
Maria would like to add something and then, well, wait, Eric was speaking first.
Thanks, Wendy. I was just going to say, a, a way of possibly reframing this is that, you know, we, I think as a board, want to engage our community in the work that we're doing. And how do we do that? So whether that's through our website, whether it's through social media or any of our channels, how do we make sure that our public is engaged in the work that we're doing?
And I also feel like an example is, like, how do we all, and I, I don't know how it is. How do we all hear the same information and share that across the board? Like maybe it's better agenda setting like the PAC, like Amber said, she didn't know what was going on with the PAC. You know, we have liaisons, maybe, I, I had that on here. Maybe the liaisons need to come to the meetings and provide more detail or write a document so that we all can understand what's going on in other avenues that we don't have time to go sit in on every meeting. And that's just amongst ourselves and that, maybe that would help. Those are things that I, I feel, I feel that there's some projects that once we pay for them and they go off, I don't know. And, you know, Maria, I know you could say it's administrative. I don't need to know about that. Maybe that's just me that I want to know, because if somebody asks me, where are the pillar, where's the pillar that you funded in Tariffill going to go? I, I didn't, I don't know unless I ask, so I have to ask to find out what's going on with that. The bleachers at the high school, we funded that two years ago. I don't know why that's not.
You're not obligated to know where that is.
But I want to know.
That's great.
But that's not a lack of, I just want to make sure it's not a lack of transparency. Transparency.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Micromanagement.
We don't oversee the Board of Education.
We funded the bleachers. You don't care.
No, the taxpayers funded the bleachers.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, if you want to.
I'm going to let Maria go and then. I'm gonna let Maria go and then move on.
A couple of points that I think might help maybe bring some fidelity to the conversation. You know, I think in terms of some really significant improvements we've made that do tie back to transparency, and again, just perhaps for some of our newer board members and members of the public. But over the last four and a half years, we have made great strides in making sure that we are preparing thorough packet materials for our key policy bodies, even our advisory committees. And we're also making those available online to the public. That was never happening in the past. And so when I think about right information, as Chris was saying earlier, that's easily and readily available to the public. The most important critical policy decisions that need to be made for this community are happening by our elected boards, whether it's this board or the Board of Finance. And you have thorough packets, those are available to the public online. That was not happening previously. So I do think that that's a huge step forward in terms of making that information available to our public. And I just don't know if, you know, folks' familiarity with that. I think another piece to this conversation, which we've had in the past, is around technology improvements. And that being a way to access services and information. And as you know, when I inherited the organization, we were terribly, terribly behind in technology. We still are. And we are working so hard at it, like little by little, right? To implement modern software. We're getting there, but that, again, I think is, is, again, it kind of falls more into administrative projects, but I think supports this goal of making sure our folks have access to, to information. But the last point in terms of, you know, our meeting format, and this is something I have discussed with Wendy. There are many different models that we could bring here that I think could be more effective. And I think that this is a conversation, perhaps as we prepare for our meeting schedule for next year, I'd like, I'd like to have with this board. Or maybe we start a personnel subcommittee. But an example is, you know, most communities, when they have presentations, or at least manager communities, it tends to be more internally focused. So you're having presentations from a department. You might be asking for a presentation, like Maria, we'd really like to hear an update on the open space master plan. But the presentations section of the agenda tends to, again, be more sort of internally focused. Another format that some communities use is they only have action items once a month. And the second meeting of their month is limited to those presentations that are more organizational-focused, updates on services, projects, et cetera. So I do think that there are some more, perhaps, effective ways that we could manage our meetings and would really welcome an opportunity later this year to discuss that all with you. But again, I think that might help with some of what I'm, I think I'm hearing from you all in regards to this area.
And that's fine, but I do want to address what was said before. Is a single constituent asking a question, we are not obligated as volunteer-elected officials to have that answer. We are obligated to be able to provide a pathway to get that answer. And the reality is, and the reason why I acted so viscerally to this, Wendy, is because Maria could give you an update every 20 minutes on what's going on in this town, and you will still not know the answer to a question that a constituent asks you next week. So the expectation that you are, or any of us is the expert and fully kept in the loop on anything is, is, first of all, not possible. Second of all, not our role as an oversight legislative strategic body. We are not supposed to have the answers to the day-to-day. That is not what the charter grants us from a power standpoint. And that is not the execution of the role. We should be able to have an effective communication pathway to the town manager to then prioritize and decide how is best to respond to those requests. And if we are not getting satisfactory eyes and response from the town manager and her team, then we deal with it legislatively or we deal with it through personnel or we deal with it through review. And the downside that we don't recognize, and I have seen, is we have the ability to paralyze town staff with countless requests. Because if they're running around constantly preparing a memo and an update for us on bleachers, they are not doing something else that is for the betterment of the community. And I recognize that there are questions that need to be answered, but how and when they're prioritized is what Maria was hired and paid to do.
Okay, so let me, I would like to
I would just like to say, as the person who added that as a, as a goal, I, my reason for adding it was that it's an internal problem, I think, with town manager accountability. And I think with just transparency and a communication at the town manager level with departments and with with us and favoritism in, in that area. And that's where my concern lies, and that's why I added it. And that's what I meant by it.
If you would like to discuss that, we can have an executive session. And that should not be discussed in open session. And we can add an executive session to a special meeting, but we can certainly add that to a future meeting.
Okay, so yes, I, I would like to move on, but, but there are instances where, yes, we, we need to talk about certain projects and things. If, if it's a board project, we should all be included in the data that results from the board project. There's been a couple of examples that I'm not going to go into where we were not. And things, you know, requests by town to work on projects of the team would be helpful for us all to hear about. So that's where I would go with this, if we're taking
We have no right to ask for projects to be worked upon.
People have from our board.
So FOIABLE documents or public information versus projects are two very different things, Wendy. And I think if you're gonna imply that folks are directing town staff.
No, I'm not.
You absolutely are.
No, I'm not.
Okay, well, you just said it.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that, Sean. And we were talking about sharing of information.
You are making substantial accusations without proof, and I think you need to be very careful with what you're doing.
I'm not making any accusations, Sean. I am saying facts and I'm not saying, I can say the facts. I think that go along with the transparency issue, if that
Again, but to go into table, to move to table, which is a non-defatable motion, the four initiatives on transparency.
Fine.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I would even say too, just back to how I, what I said before, we all prioritize these. I mean, I know we're discussing them, but they, they didn't make the cut as much as I wanted some of them to, and that's
I put them on because it was the only one in there.
Right, but I do take a problem. Here's the issue. When you say, when you say transparency and then you cite two things. You cited the bleachers and the pillar. And you cite, we have to be careful. You cite it in, with the, with the inflection as if, I can't find, it's one thing, can I, I'm curious or I'm, I don't know where to find information on the status of it versus what's going on with it. Is it being done? Is it not being done? Who's, who's, that's the problem, that's where we have to be careful of that kind of conversation.
So maybe we need to, as Maria said, we can, in our meetings, we can start getting updates and ask the board for updates they want from things that we've funded, things from the budget, and we can bring those to the table. Okay, so let's move on to the executive coaching and 360 opportunities. I got five highs and mediums. I don't see that as a goal of the Board of Selectmen. I see that as a town manager administrative goal because it doesn't really impact us. I think that was
It's essentially captured in the next one.
Also had a couple of others that are more organizational.
Yeah.
The next one's investing in the workforce through professional development is the first one, right?
Yeah, I think that one should be on.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
We need to show our staff that we care about them, not only when we bring them in.
Yeah, yeah, agreed, agreed. The Engage the Satisfac, the the Satisfaction Survey, we got four votes there. I would like to keep that in. I think that's important for the Town Hall to have an independence survey, that we could hear the voices from the highest down to the lowest people that work here and make sure that we're taking care of all of our employees.
As long as we fund it.
Okay, it's on the town list too. The Personnel Rules, we've talked about that. Maria, is that on here? No, because that, are you saying that that's more of a, you're?
It wasn't, again, a higher priority.
Yeah, okay.
But as you know, as I mentioned to you about it a year, year and a half ago, that is something that myself, Major Coordinator, have identified that we really need to update that. But from a capacity standpoint, we will need legal counsel assistance. It's just to, it's, it's, they weren't updated in such a long time that we really just need extra hands to help get that project.
And we've been talking about it at Personnel and we're
So we don't, we don't, it's, okay, that's fine. I, I put it back on just to make sure we didn't want to, we, we, we wanted to make sure it was somewhere. Oops, I just cut my thing. Oh, well. And then we did at one point talk about, and I only brought this back up, constituent tracking system. At one point, there seemed to be a lot of interest in that, but it's nowhere on anything. And the reason I'm bringing it up was, I was asking Melissa when we had the email issue and the, and it said that the town had replied to some, I don't need to know other replies, but I need to know that it was replied to. So there's no way to know if somebody asked something, who replied? Do I need to reply? That's the only reason I'm saying that I brought it back up.
And Wendy, as someone who felt that pain too, I've thought about wanting a constituent tracking system for a long time. I think it just comes down to where is that gonna fall amongst everything else that's on here?
I know.
But I'm, I just want to validate that. I think that that would be amazing.
Given it's probably no, there's probably no capacity for something like that or funding right now.
Yeah, typically what you would see in larger communities is a 3-1-1 system. Yeah, you typically see a 3-1-1 system, which is essentially a customer service center with a 3-1-1 software system. We wouldn't really refer to it as a constituent. It tends to be more of an elected official thing.
That's what we need to talk about though, because of, we don't have a hybrid form of government, but there are six of us to our prior conversation. We get dozens of questions all the time, as do other boards. And again, we, you and I have talked about this. If we want to, if we want to do it, we got to fund not only the person, but the process. The legislative office has it. Both parties have it. And again, it's not just a party thing. Again, because we do deal with so many constituents, my tree fell, all those other things. There's potential benefit to both the town and the elected side to looking at it versus that true 3-1-1, there's a pothole on 185 thing. But I, again, I don't think there's any money right now or capacity to do it, but that's, I, I do see value longer term to looking at that.
That could be, that could be something by transparency.
It is, because it shows you that, well, it's constituent responsiveness that we can say we respond to.
What I'm saying, that could be an actionable item.
It could be. Right, yeah, because we can look up the answers to everything and we would have all the answers.
And we can also make staffing decisions. If we don't like the answer, it takes an average of 3.6 days to respond. And we decide that's not acceptable. Well, we put our money where our mouth is and we hire more people, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. But we're not keeping it on the list, it sounds like.
I think there should be a list of really good ideas that we don't want to fall off our radar.
Well, that's what I was saying that later, like, do we want to keep track of future things so we don't, next year or whatever, we don't have to redo this whole from scratch? All right, so I think we're done with that item, that page, that goal. And then this goal, I don't know if it's a, how to define this, but there's the economic vision for our community. And some of the, I dumped the rest of, well, they were on here like that anyway, right? Economic development. I just used vision as the word. We know that we want to work on a MOU with Main Street Partnership so that there's an understanding of what their role is with economic development versus what the town's role is with the planner, so we can understand that. The cannabis, we don't know where zoning's going. We know that there's some leeway that the board has also to make sure that the public is aware of, we'll take care of not use and smoking in public and things like that. And keep our eyes on the cannabis use.
Will we be getting a further update on that?
There will be a memo from our planning director as well as a legal opinion from our town attorney under the Communications section in your upcoming pack. It's almost likely that they're working on it for the 9/12 packet.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. I just had to think about the date, wanted to make sure I was getting that right.
Okay, and then the charrette for Terriffill, I know that would have to be part of the POCD, correct?
Or in partnership with the Planning Commission. So perhaps, you know, we could just make a note maybe in parentheses, in partnership with the Planning Commission. I could certainly, you know, I did reach out to our planning director about this idea. I could certainly also reach out to the Planning Commission Chair if you all decide to move forward with an interest in this area.
Okay, and you, you had it on, that one had a three and, and then six people voted as a low, so we all did have an inkling for that. We just didn't probably rank it with other things, so I would think we could keep it. It's on the town list too. All right, and then I think that's done. All right, does everybody feel that we're done? And I'd like to focus, Maria, if possible, with you on presentation of the goals, either through our website, so that there's some context around what's there. I, I know, we don't want to spend time on the mission statement because now we're at 2:30, but just so that it's kind of in a readable format with some understanding context for the residents instead of just a spreadsheet list. That's my feeling, but I don't, if the board just is happy with it, you know, in a, in a list, that's fine too.
What have we done in the past, just the list?
Yeah.
We saw, we actually, I think the very first meeting had the
The last list. It was in the budget from this year. It was in, shown as our budget.
Yes, it doesn't look much different.
That's fine.
I don't think it's an obligation, but if you, if you want to do it, there's no problem with putting it together and pushing it out there, again, for the improved communication of what we're
Well, that's what I'm striving for. We, if we have the goals, so, I mean, and then put it out, I could put it on my page. I don't care, but just in a PowerPoint or something.
I think, you know, the mission is good in that it allows residents to understand when we say we have goals, that these are policy and driven and, and kind of what that actually means, so.
What's that?
To have a mission statement.
I'm not, I, I, I'm super cool with the mission statement, but I don't want to make this another three weeks.
No, we're not. So, so how about if
I'll start arguing that our mission
Can we vote on the goals now? Today, at least tomorrow?
Oh, we are gonna vote on the goals.
Put a goal and then we're gonna make a mission statement.
Yeah, we're gonna Oh, we're gonna put that as a goal, yes.
It's gonna take us six months and four subcommittees to do it, but we'll get it done.
For 2023, we'll have
We just say the goals as discussed.
You know, I, I would feel more comfortable if you all wouldn't mind just giving me about 60 more seconds up the tops. I'm just polishing up again. What I think I heard, I'll have Melissa pull it up, and if we can just do a quick scan before you do a, you know, motion as presented. And then if we catch a typo or something, just isn't
Oh, yeah, I forgot you have to do this on the fly.
Yeah, I'll just take it.
Yeah, okay, so what, you want to take, can we, we have to make a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Pretty much.
Can I take a five-minute recess?
Okay, can we take a five-minute recess for some people? We need to.
I can take it from here. So I just, again, just for a bit more of our comfort level, we wanted to make sure that we were capturing the key goals and topic areas, you know, that were most important to you. So again, I don't know if you need us to, to increase the font size or if you need us to read through each one quickly.
Can I just, can I ask one question? Like, isn't, and this is how I view it, isn't a topic area really the goal and the goals are really the initiatives or
Yeah, we could rename.
Like, I don't know if anybody else looks at it that way. To me, a goal isn't, that's just like a, an action item or a priority or a focus. But it can stay this way if people
Yeah, we could change the, you know, the wording to a goal and
I can't remember.
Something of that nature.
Because that was Eric had also looked at it that way. We have both kind of looked at it as the big goal. These are really initiatives or, or things that we're doing to support that goal.
Sure, that makes sense. Can you guys read that okay, or do you need us just to? I'll think.
Yeah, we can. Okay, so Engage a Long Range Capital Planning Incorporated. So we're still, I just want to ask, we're still including incorporate the town's facility master plan even though later we have continued prioritization and implementation. Shouldn't we just take that out of the top one?
Yep.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then the Explored Shared Services. We know that there's potential facilities or other things that are more than just the finance department. I'm just saying that so everyone who happens to be listening this afternoon knows that. Okay, and we're gonna continue prioritization and implementation of facilities, including sustainability initiatives. Did, did we say that's what we were gonna write? What, we're not gonna spell out the clean energy initiatives?
I think that makes sense, right, Eric? Because that's a subset, clean energy is a subset of sustainability.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about this and I, I think that that's, I could get behind that.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that one?
Okay. Invest in our athletic fields, Terriffill Parks, Simsbury Farms, and Implement Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Priorities filling gaps in the trail. Okay.
Just to, just to clarify again, under the sustainability, are we, does that also include things that had come up about like vegetation management and the biodiversity study and pollinator work? Is all of that in the green initiatives regarding, you know, EVs? Is that all considered part of sustainability?
You know, I would say that probably falls more under implementation of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. So if maybe you wanted to collaborate sustainability as part of that initiative as well, we certainly could. Because that has been a real focus of the Open Space Committee, working with staff. So that might be something under
So invest in, in sustainability, our athletic fields, or execution of our sustainability initiatives. Athletic fields.
Well, then they're in both places because
Take it out above, is what I'm saying.
No, because the facilities, we talked about the, the desire of, like, town No, because the facilities, we talked about the, the desire of like Tom Roy to work towards having an energy person. That was, that was how I worded, was more on the energy, clean energy initiatives for park, for facilities. If you want to say sustainability under Parks and Rec, then I would, could get around that.
Okay.
So change included, yeah, so change six B to including clean energy initiatives.
Right, because it's a buildings and a fleet and everything like that.
So when it's facilities, it's more clean energy. When it's parks and rec, it's more sustainability, right?
Very good guess.
You know, what it, it might suggest under the athletic fields wording is perhaps it's just something adding invest in our athletic fields, comma, Terraville Park, comma, Simsbury Farms, comma, sustainable land management, comma, and implement parks and open space master plan.
Should each of these though, yeah.
That line, yeah.
But should each of these say as, as, as presented in the master plan? Because we shouldn't just start inserting things in here that aren't already in the master plan. So if we caveat it that way, because if I said, oh, I just, I want to, I don't know. I mean, these should all be in the master plans. Like, we're not going to go invest in new soccer fields if it's not part of Parks and Recs.
Well, if it's in, in, in coordination or as cited in the Parks and Recs.
Yes. Coordination with the master plan is the right terminology.
That's what I think we're trying to get at.
Yeah, because if it's something we need to do, then it should be in the, in the plan, or we should add it to the plan.
Which is why we should have just said the master plan, but we all want to spike it up, so.
And just with our master planning documents, you know, those are something that will probably last us for a fairly significant amount of time. I would say generally at least a ten year period before we would be refreshing that. But there are, right, from time to time, there are priorities that might change, or there may be new science that emerges. And I'm thinking that a really good example of that is around the area of sustainable management practices, right? That's some emerging and evolving science. And so while most of our master plan, right, will probably still be relevant in ten years, that's an example of an area that just because it wasn't in it when we wrote it might not be something that we need to be thinking about as we move forward.
Yeah, so. Yes, yes, yes. That's a good one.
You can go home now, Melissa.
Hardest person in the room, Melissa. Well done.
When can I go? Actually, can I go back to work?
Between the two of us, we've personally elongated this meeting by an hour and twenty minutes, so.
I'm missing my office.
Are you? No, you're not.
I am.
Your office.
Almost all my staff's back and I feel like there's.
They're not missing you.
I know, exactly.
Yeah, if you word it that way, then you don't even need to say in conjunction with, because you're saying coordinate, including, those are included in it, right?
Are we going to change sustainability on line six to clean energy initiatives?
Yes. Good. Okay.
You're gone.
Yep. You're rolling.
Don't give us too much time. Yep, partner for planning, driving organization itself, yep. A center workforce through professional, yep, engage in employee satisfaction, love it.
Good. So if that list looks good, I think we have a motion in your packet and.
Oh, yeah, we do. Oh, here it is. Okay. So move effective August twenty fifth, twenty twenty two to adopt the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three Board of Select. Should it say twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two?
Oh, I apologize for.
I don't care.
Oh, wait, let me, let me, sorry, let me pull that motion back up.
Yeah, it's just reflective of the boards.
Yeah, I got, I got that.
Yes, twenty one, twenty three would be your two year term.
Okay, as presented or as amended and presented just now.
Move that.
Second.
Any discussion? Why, no, all those in favor? Done. Okay, the next item on the agenda, which we're down to fifteen minutes, is going through the town manager's goal. Marie, I believe we base those on a lot of what was in here, but with the context of where it falls and the framework of why it's in here, do you want to start doing that here? Do we want to do that?
Maybe I could just, again, provide a very quick overview in terms of the approach I've taken in the past with the board. And if, obviously, if we want to deviate, that's fine. You know, I thought Chris brought up a really good point that maybe would be worth just mentioning again at our last meeting, you know. Some of my goals are going to be more organizational focused, more related to my core, core job functions in terms of the day to day operations and of the organization, as well as perhaps legal requirements that I have. And I think a good example of that actually is my highest priority item, at least from, from my perspective regarding collective bargaining. That is a critical function of my position. There are legal requirements around that. That is very much administrative in nature. You all do provide a little bit of right policy feedback for me as we're going through that process. But that largely does fall on my shoulders. And that's, I think, one of those goals that's most likely not going to ever really fit nice and tidy into one of your strategic goals. But it is something that takes a tremendous amount of my time, my organization's time, and it is nonetheless very, very important for us. So we kind of go ahead and we look at things such as that. We tend to look at what are our needs of the organization that we believe have evolved or developed throughout the year. So, for example, there's a special project in here where my interdepartmental team that works on public gathering permits, we don't have a policy or an ordinance here for that. That's a bit unusual. At times, we find that very difficult and challenging. So really developing that, bringing that to you, improving the process, just from a resources standpoint and better policy. That's an example of a need that we've, we've identified. We also, when I'm developing this, I'll typically take a look at any goals you've set for your two year term. We also take a look at things like our master planning documents, approved budget items that we know are a significant priority for you all. So it's really sort of a lot of different factors that we go through. We try, you know, I try to work on this list. I try to include, you know, as, if possible, at least every, every department, right? And in most circumstances are going to show up at least some way in these goals. So it really is sort of a culmination of, of all those, all those factors. I know in the past, my list has tended to be a bit ambitious or a bit aggressive. But, you know, I appreciate that you all have been, you know, flexible if, you know, priorities and needs change. I think, you know, a good example was like when the Meadowwood acquisition initially popped up on our radar. It was after this process had already occurred, but, right, that was something you wanted me to shift focus and energy to. So, okay, maybe one or two of the smaller projects don't get done and they carry forward. And so that's typically sort of the, the process that we've worked through in the past. As a result, I came up with this draft list of goals. And then again, you know, just open, open to feedback on how folks feel about that.
Can we put them up on the screen? And then Wendy, if, if, okay, I think we can, we can cut the, the ARPA reference because we cut that one.
I was going to say that because that's, that frees up a high capacity. I'm joking.
And then you can amend the, basically cut the second sentence from the DEI one. Because, I mean, just leaving it at a high level that we're going to continue to support special project initiatives and policies for inclusive and workforce and community for DEI.
Pulling up my Word document here. So, I'm sorry, under financial management, Sean, you said, I think I heard the group say take out the ARPA reference.
Yeah, we took that out of ours, right, because it's, it's all a revenue loss, so it's really just as Wendy articulated, and she's right, it's just normal budgetary process now.
I heard that piece, I'm sorry, and then I missed the second piece.
I think you can cut the second sentence from DEI because that, the survey data collection analysis project was kind of last year, right?
We're actually, no, doing the bulk of that work this year. We're getting ready to issue the RFQ.
Okay, never mind.
My only thought there was that there's also other subcommittees that are quite active. And part of me feels like, let's, let's call them all out or call none of them out.
Exactly.
And I think that, that would be my preference, would be to call none of them out and just supporting the work of the DEI.
So that means cut the second sentence, right?
Yeah, just get rid of that.
Yep.
And also, just, I'll give you a quick reference point for the data collection piece is that the data collection project is something that my office, including myself, will be heavily involved in. So taking a bit more sort of an effort, like directly from the office, that was the only reason we're thinking of including it, but I'm perfectly okay removing that.
I mean, we don't even know what it means yet either, do we? I mean, like, they, I, I don't know what this, I don't know what they're collecting data, but I don't know what it's going to mean in the long run. So it seems like it should be left sort of vague.
Yeah, we can keep it vague.
We're taking that as well.
The one thing I had, so a couple issues too, is like, some of these are your job work plan, right? These are things that you guys work on all the time, and some of these are more creative, you know, oversight, help with the policy. So that's why, to me, some of this is hard, like the annual leadership retreat. I mean, I guess, is that a top goal for you to do? It was from the twenty twenty one. I know we're, so that's a carryover annual event, right?
Yeah, we fund that in the budget.
Okay. The special village, so I'm, I'm just trying to go through some of these just to see, like, the special villages initiatives related to special events, infrastructure improvements and economic development. Isn't, is that just part of the, the job?
That's what we just talked about though, with doing a special charrette for Terraville. That's what a special village is, right?
I guess, should we just, since we approved our goals, should we just take a look and make sure, you know, if any, any of our policies that we've just set, how they can be implemented if they're not already into here and if anything needs to be added or changed based on what we just approved? And those are outside of the job things, like what Maria just described with, you know, things that are organizational, things that are part of her job, such as dealing with unions, et cetera. You know, I just don't know if, is it easier just to look at what we added or what we just approved and look at, is there anything that should be added or changed based on what we just approved?
Okay.
Like a column.
Unless a lot of it fits in, like you said, how the charrette just fits in. I know there is one in here that says of supporting our policies.
Yeah, I mean, the, the budget, well, that's where it's hard, the budget, like, that's part of the core job.
Right, so.
So it's, is it a?
I don't think we need to call it out is my point.
But then you could say that about the negotiations for the dispatchers, because that, Maria said that's a high amount of time for her, as is the budget. But they're part of her, her job. So that's what I'm.
I guess what I was saying is we didn't need to call out the, the attention of the master plan and the capital stuff as part of the budget was probably my point, but. I mean, Maria has prepared and submitted the operating budget and capital budgets, which, again, it's assumed that she takes our, our needs into account. And if she doesn't, because we see them next, it candidly doesn't matter whether she takes our needs into account or not, we take our needs into account. Right, because we have, Maria is first, we are second. If we were first and she was second, it would be different. We would need to say that as a goal.
Say that again?
She can present whatever budget she wants to us. She does not have to account for our goals and initiatives in the original budget she presents to us, if she chooses. We then decide what goes in the budget that becomes our budget that sets on. So my point is, is I don't feel the need to connect our Board of Selectmen's goals to her budget obligation, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I kind of don't necessarily agree with what you just said, because if we're the, this is a different conversation. If we're the policy body and we're, we're guiding Maria on how she should set the budget, she should consider the policy guidance in determining the capital budget. So you just said the opposite to that.
So the charter says that Maria creates the budget. It doesn't say she has to listen to the Board of Selectmen when she creates the budget.
But candidly, she will.
Sorry, Sean. Board of Selectmen then votes on our budget.
So then we should go back and hear everything that filtered, I mean, if Maria's not looking out for the, this is like a semantics. If the town manager isn't looking out for the policy interests of the elected body when doing the budget, then we should be hearing the same thing she's hearing so we can make our own decisions. So you're saying something that I don't understand.
We do hear the same thing she does. We go through two ways of.
We go through, Maria goes through the meetings with the town departments, and then we go through them with a filtered view based on the town manager's presentation. So you're saying something opposite.
Well, you're talking about, there is the literal preparation of the budget, which is her job. And then there's the implied, there's the implied function that she plays in the, in the preparation of the budget, which is to add in the, 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 the life and the body and the meaning, in the, in the meat of the budget, the meat of the budget, so. You can't capture that. I mean, I mean, how do I capture that? I mean, I think it's assumed, right? It's assumptive to a certain extent.
But what I'm just, I, I don't.
All I say is, I don't feel the need to tie the two together because we have the ultimate say on the budget, is all I'm saying.
So what are you, what are you suggesting on paper?
That we don't tie any of those budgetary items to the town manager's goals at this point. From a budgetary standpoint, I don't feel the need to.
Okay, so is there an example, like?
Execution of the facilities master plan, prioritizing athletic fields, sustainability, et cetera.
Well, they're not, no, I, that's at a high level.
We don't need to do that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say we did, because they're not on here, I don't think, right?
No.
So.
Can we just vote on that?
Can we vote on what?
Never mind.
The whole list?
No, never mind. Never mind.
Okay. So these, so let's just, this is, like, if you look at the, their low items, so we have the pollinator pathway. The tobacco one is fine. That goes to the cannabis one? Is that related to the cannabis? Artem.
Melissa, can you bring up the goals we just approved, please? That's the point I was trying to make, Wendy. We just approved goals.
Yep.
And Heather's suggestion was to tie those goals to these goals. And I was trying to do that with our very first goal is capital planning, and then it talks about execution of master plans. That's all I was trying to do for you, instead of going, bouncing around randomly through goals.
Okay. So Heather's suggestion was to take, were you, were you thinking to take this back and look at it in context or do that as we go through it?
No, I was just looking at, since we have all of, we now have our goals.
So, okay, so let's go.
Do they fit in? Okay, so we'll say, okay, this one, it fits in here. Great.
Okay.
That goal fits in here. Perfect.
So should we just go through each one and make sure that it fits or covers one of our goals?
The rest of the board would like to do that.
I was trying to support what you were saying.
Yes, yeah, I would do that.
I think we can get through this very quickly if we do that.
Yes.
Okay, so, so the top goal for Maria is working on the, the union.
Working on the budget, and my only point before we went, I'm talking about these goals right here, engage in long range capital planning. Is it in this list?
Yes.
Look at our goals first. Is, is that goal part of Maria's goals? The answer is yes, as part of the budget process.
Okay.
And then shared services. Maria, are you, do you still have shared services in your goal?
Special projects.
Okay.
So good, right? Prioritization of implementation of master plan, my point earlier that didn't hit home was, that's part of the budgetary process.
It is correct.
Prioritization of implementation of master plan, part of the budgetary process, second one, right?
Yeah, I think a few of the special projects do also link back to both the Parks and Open Space as well as the Facilities Master Plan.
Gaps in trail connectivity, same thing, right?
Right, we usually tackle that under the projects for our special villages.
DEI, we already, we already changed and amended that, right? The study, you're executing that. The seniors one, is there a lift from your office or a need for you to be involved in that goal?
You know, my office has assisted a bit as needed, and you all will be happy to, to continue to do so.
So we need to add that one. Just for clarity and continuity, right, Amber? I mean, that's.
I think so. I mean, it would be a low priority because it should be very minimal.
But it's ongoing and we just want to tie the two together, right, so that we have continuity between the two documents.
So I would make a change to the financial management evaluate opportunities to enhance our capital budgeting and long range planning capabilities. Maria has that as a low. I would make that at least a medium to high because that was the high in our list. That's one I would change.
So it's our job to execute that. It's her job to facilitate it. I'm, I'm not sure they need to be aligned from a higher or medium standpoint, I guess, is because we're the ones that do it. But I don't want to quibble over highs, mediums, or lows. She sets up a meeting, we're, we're the ones that do it, right?
Just to get back, just to close the loop on the aging survey, I think it would be similar to what Maria has down for the library because she has to support the library in its implementation of its updated five year strategic plan. I think a similar goal would be like support social services or the senior center as we do the age friendly study, right, survey and, and designation, because that's really who's driving this. And then, do we have to take one off? Because we can't, adding to your list.
I think in the past, if, you know, again, I, I think myself and the team were able to manage things really well. I, I think we would.
I like that either written.
But maybe support efforts for the town to become an age friendly community.
Yeah, yeah, just something like that. Yeah.
We can add that.
Yeah, because the, you don't have to take anything off. I mean, engage in employee satisfaction surveys, an example, that's on there.
Yep.
You do, once you've done it, you don't need to do it repeatedly. It's implied. I, I would think it would hope that it comes around cyclically ever so often, but i- it's not, it may not be on your 2024 action. So you can insert the, you know, comment and execute where applicable, the age, the, I almost, what's the word for the start, the group? What's the?
Aging disability?
Aging, you know, the exact survey, excuse me. Thank you. That's all. So you don't need to worry about on and off, I think. Because some of the stuff does get done and then goes dormant and then comes back on.
Is the MOU on there, Maria?
Oh, no, I can add that. Yeah.
Well, you had, you had, you have a different wording, work with Economic Development Commission and stakeholders. Well, I was going to try to make a more rounded economic development item, but we want to accept that. That's fine.
No, I can definitely add that.
And then again, what I was trying to say before is so engage in the charrette and rezoning for T-Ville. You have a small role in that, right? But that's going to be supporting the villages.
And that will be through the planning.
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, a lot of those types of special projects around our special villages, whether it's, you know, Western's very Terriffel, will typically summarize, you know, for you, or I will typically summarize for you. And that report you get at the end of the year. And it's kind of the category that we, we try to capture a lot of that.
Just as an aside, sorry, this meeting outlawed her. Is that an initiative that's potentially supported by a, a grant at all? Like that type of? Just thought about it. That's all.
Capital items, Chris, we got.
I know, but I'm just wondering that.
Setting with cash.
Considering with what's going on in the state budget.
We've gotten yelled at by the Board of Finance for trying to bond for those in the, in the past. So we end up paying cash on.
Cannabis is on there.
Yep. You've got investing in the workforce.
Engage in place survey.
That's on there.
And that's the end.
That's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. So our goals are accounted for.
Okay.
Right? Because then it's just. Yeah. I say that like it was, everybody agrees our goals are accounted for?
I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth, well, we're, we, it's worth saying, I think, I believe that I've, I've finished that correctly, that again, when you say creation, Sean, just, the literal function that, that Maria has to do is the, is the creation, preparation of the budget.
Correct.
But the implied is that, you'd say, is that in conjunction, that the, you, you, you utilize the plans to create the narrative for what you bring forth for conversation in the budget. But it doesn't say that.
That would be the expectation, right?
Correct, that's the implied.
I get too literal with charter language, but yes.
That's, that's the implied. So we know that's happening. That's actually, that's how the, that's what the budget, that's what that day is. It's narrative and most of it comes from your guidance of having conversations with your areas, your functional areas and looking at the plans.
Absolutely, right? Specials up in the open, specials up in the budget message and the presentation.
Well, and you, you teed up for us items that we had to decide whether it was in or out. I mean, you called out specific things that, you know, if they were not included in the budget, that we could go back and, and that we could take a vote on.
The, the involvement of Amy Meriwether, there's this, there's no more graphic, literal example of the budget being a narrative you're preparing as a, as a collaborative conversation. You know, that part, that participants. So.
Okay, so. Get to vote?
I don't have any other recommended changes.
Okay, there's a motion in here, correct?
You want to win?
Sorry? Oh, thank you. I was almost there.
Isn't it in private?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have it printed or anything. Okay, so move effective August 25th, 2022 to a town, adopt the town manager's goals for July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023, as discussed and amended in the working session.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, done. I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It were adjourned.